That's more workable?
That'll work.
Okay.
I'm gonna, um, switch over to my laptop. For some reason, my charger's not working, so that's where I'm going.
Okay.
Hey Jeff.
Yes.
Would it be possible for you to print off a paper agenda for me?
Will do.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll hold for a minute till we get that. All right, looks like we've talked to our friend the owl here, which we're still getting used to working with here. It feels like we're looking up in the sky every time we talk, even though the the speaker and the camera is down on our desk here. But I think we're ready to go this evening. Again, welcome to the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. It's a virtual meeting again, November twenty-three, two thousand and twenty, six thirty P M. So at this time, I'd like to start to call the meeting to order, but before we go there, I'd like to turn it back over to the town clerk. Melody?
Good evening. I just wanted to go over a couple logistics with relation to this meeting. Participants, please make sure to keep your camera on while the meeting is in progress and to mute yourselves when you're not talking. Board members, the mayor will call on each of you individually to provide comments and votes. We do have one change from our usual procedures. When voting, please remember to identify yourselves by stating your name and your vote. If you would like to speak at any point during this meeting, please raise your hands and be mindful of your background. If we are in the middle of a presentation and you're raising your hand but not being called on, please feel free to speak up. Additionally, we would like to make sure that all board members are able to participate in this meeting fully. If you experience any technical difficulties, please let me know via text. So next, we need to take the roll call. Please indicate if you're present. Mayor Ronald Pappas.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Brennan McMillan.
Present.
Commissioner Anne Simpson.
Present.
Commissioner Tracy Westlick.
Present.
Commissioner Pedro Moray. Thank you. All members are present. Mayor, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Very good. Thank you, Melody. A little more technical difficulties usually with the fat fingers here, so we'll jump down to the next part, our opening. And so if you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance, and then we will pause briefly for a moment of silence. Nick, thank you very much for this. We'll start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. Thank you, everybody. All right, we're gonna move down to the next part is the adoption of the agenda. Do I hear any requests, any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none up there right now, I'm gonna call for a roll call vote to adopt tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved.
All right, roll call vote, please. Mayor Pro Tim McMillan?
Aye.
Commissioner Westlick?
Aye.
Would you mind to please state your name with the motion, with your vote?
Aye, Brenda McMillan.
Commissioner Westlick?
Aye. I don't know where my speaker just.
If you could just state your name as well. We're gonna have to get used to a new procedure.
Okay, Tracy Westlick, aye.
We're good. Commissioner Moray?
Pedro Moray, aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Anne Simpson, aye.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. We are ready to go to the next segment. We do have a statement by the town clerk again. Melody, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So a total of thirteen comments were received with twelve of those comments pertaining to Broad Street Homes rezoning. The window for public comments missions closed twenty-four hours after the public hearing concluded on August eleventh, two thousand and twenty. All comments received within the twenty-four hour period were forwarded to the board and incorporated into the public record. Following the closure of the public comment period on August eleventh, any public comments received related to Broad Street Homes have been provided to the Board of Commissioners and will remain on file with the Clerk's office. Later in the meeting, we will have two public comments related to general public comment session.
Very good. Thank you, Melody. All right, we're gonna go drop down to the consent agenda. Do I have any questions or any changes requested for the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'm gonna have a motion, please. If somebody makes a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Anne Simpson, I'll make a mo-
We got a little change of procedure, so we're gonna want to make the motion, state the name, then we'll also make the motion or make the vote and state the name as well. So a little bit different this time.
I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda, Brenda McMillan.
Very good. We have a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Com-
Pedro Moray, aye.
Great. Commissioner Westlick?
Aye, Tracy Westlick.
Commissioner Simpson?
Anne Simpson, aye.
Very good. Thank you. The consent agenda is adopted as presented. And so we have some recognitions, and I see Mr. Matthew on the screen with us over here. You're smiling all the time. That's frozen smile unless we get to see, uh, see you alive. There you go.
I am here. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it this evening. So I'll go ahead and get started. Hello, my name's Matthew Selves. I'm the Public Safety Risk Management Consultant for the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Thank you, Mayor Pappas and the Waxaw Board of Commissioners for this time in recognizing the Waxaw Police Department for completing the North Carolina League's Law Enforcement Risk Review Program. Now, the risk review program involves a comprehensive review of high-risk policies, operations, and practices. That include a detailed onsite agency administrative and operations review of the department's equipment, facility, conduct officer interviews, observations of operations, all to validate best practices aligned with the industry. We specifically look at high liabilities within the department that consist of police vehicle operations, response to active resistance, evidence, employment practices and procedures, and about thirty-six categories in all, Mayor. Now, this review is supported by the North Carolina Police Chiefs Association. I'm proud to report this evening that the Waxaw Police Department has completed the law enforcement risk review. The chief and the department and the staff prioritize this initiative, and the department was very proactive and involved in the whole process. I want to personally thank the chief, Lieutenant McMullin, and the command staff for their leadership and participating in a very important initiative. They were very transparent during the whole process. I have spent twenty-four years in law enforcement, twelve years as a police chief in Troutman, North Carolina, Iredell County. The officers I work with demonstrated a very high level of commitment throughout the state of North Carolina and are very professional, and their communities and relationships as well. And again, Mayor, I'd like to congratulate the department, and as you can see, the plaque is there up on the screen. Recognizing the Waxaw Police Department for completing the review presented today, November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. I hope to make a trip down there after Thanksgiving, and I'll be delivering the plaque to the chief and command staff and maybe get a picture, you know, outside the department. Recognizing them so we can promote this on the League's website, and you can promote it on your town's social media site as well. And again, I'd like to congratulate the chief and lieutenant for hard work well done in the police department. Congratulations.
We'll do a loud clap, round of applause for the police department. They are racking them up. We're gonna have a hard time talking to them because they won't be able to fit all their awards in one room, so appreciate all the effort. Lieutenant Mulligan, Chief ICE, and all the staff and crew from the police department. Job well done, guys. Really appreciate it. So thank you very much. Thank you, Matthew, for being a part of this presentation tonight. And I look forward to lots of pictures when you come over and physically present to them. So if you guys can do that, we'll make sure we get it recognized and noticed out in the public as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Town Board as well. Thank you.
Lieutenant Mulligan, is there anything that you would want to say? I see you're on the screen. Are you listening only? I think he's hiding tonight. All right, so we'll, uh, we'll roll over to that, but again, well job Waxaw Police Department, well done job Waxaw Police Department. Appreciate that. Okay, we're gonna move down. Let's see, there's nothing tonight under presentations, nothing tonight under public hearings. We're down to G, old business. And this one is a presentation by Madison. Madison, if you could bring us forward enough to date on this, we'll give the mic over to you, and I don't see you on the screen yet. There you go, coming up.
Good afternoon, everybody. It's been a while since I've been here, but let me pull up my presentation real quick.
Again, this is discussion on the general rezoning of Broad Street Homes, R Z zero-one-zero-two-eight-five-dash-two thousand and twenty. Madison, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you guys see my full screen?
We can't hear.
Okay.
Everybody? Everybody's good?
All right, let's go. So explanation of requests, as Melody mentioned, the public hearing for this was held back on August eleventh. And so this is a petition requested by Broad Street Homes for a general town rezoning from R three, our single-family residential zoning district, to U N, our urban neighborhood downtown zoning district. And so the addresses are for three sixteen Providence Street. Tax parcel ID I have updated now since Union County shows record of the subdivision of the parcels. And I will show this more in depth on the maps. And then the second parcel in question is on Washington Street. It's about four point two acres. And again, this is from a general rezoning request from R three to U N. And so here you can kind of see the location of the parcels. One parcel here located on North Providence Street, and then the second being located along Washington Street. And so this parcel here in blue with the house with the pool has been subdivided. And so the rezoning request is for this yellow parcel here in the back. And then the second request is gonna be for this bigger parcel up here. So it is currently split zone between U N here in the blue, and then the rear portion, which is the rezoning, is currently R three in the yellow. And so the combined acreage of all this is about five acres. And so here again, here's just another aerial showing you the parcels in question. So going over the current zoning districts, to the north is the Southbrook subdivision, and you can see it being zoned C U R M one. To the east are residential properties, zoned R three and R four. To the south is about the same, parcels owned R four and some zoned U N as well. And then to the west are additional residential properties on U N, and then farther down along North Providence Street, you see the zoning district town center. So moving to our future land use plan, so this is a future land use bridge policy, which shows the property as G four downtown residential. You can see this is kind of consistent along Miller Drive and then North Providence Street, and then along other streets in the area. And so the uses and density for this is a mixture of detached, single-family cottages, duplexes, and then townhomes. And so the permitted densities are around four to twenty dwelling units per acre, which just depend on site characteristics and then the housing type. And so the requested zoning of U N, our urban neighborhoods, only district is consistent with the G four downtown sector with the residential designation. So the proposed zoning is the U N. This is a district that consists of predominantly medium-density residential with more of that urban feel fabric with it being in our downtown. And so the variety of building types are single-family dwellings to townhomes. And so the setbacks and landscaping are variable, but it's, it incorporates streets with curb and gutter and sidewalks. So in our current ordinance, our U D O, this shows the lot requirements of the R three, and then as it compares to the U N downtown zoning district. And so you can see the front setbacks vary a little bit, and R three, it's thirty feet. And then in U N, it's a minimum of six to the maximum of twenty-four. And you can see some of these differences with the rear setbacks here. And then, of course, the lot width are some of the differences. While, but at our regular planning meeting, planning board meeting in July, the planning board voted unanimously to send a favorable recommendation for you guys, and then also voted unanimously on the reasonableness and consistency statement. And so as far as the planning staff recommendation, staff recommends the approval of the proposed general rezoning. The U N zoning district is suitable for this property, so it's in keeping with our comp plan with the G four downtown residential designation. The district is compatible with future land use and planning goals of the town of Waxall. And the subject property is adjacent to other properties in the area that are, that are zoned the same residential density. So the request tonight, our requested action is for a motion to approve or a motion to deny the petition as presented. And then I will also ask for a motion on our, on a reasonableness and consistency statement. And so I will open this up for questions. I will say the applicant is supposed to be here to provide some additional comments for, for a few minutes. But I would like to say that this is, again, just a general rezoning from R three, our single-family residential zoning district to U N, our urban neighborhood zoning district. And so if he is here, let's see if he, he shows up. Do not see him, but in the meantime, I'm, uh, open for questions, comments that you may have.
Madison, this is Commissioner Westlick. Um, can you tell me again, what is the maximum density allowed for U N?
So with our U N zoning district, there isn't a maximum density. So it's more of what amount of density they could fit within the parcel limits. And so it's based more on that as far as site constraints versus in our new ordinance, you know, R four is four units per acre, so that would be your density max. So in U N, it's more of the housing choice or whatever they propose to be there and what can fit within the, the site, the site limits.
I have a question, Brenda McMillan. You made reference to the fact that this is consistent with the current land use?
I did, yes.
Okay, and just now in the statement, you said with our future land development, but we have not approved that, so we cannot go by that. We can go by what we are currently zoned and what we are currently working with. Am I correct?
That is correct. I was, uh, using it as an example to kind of show the differences as far as density restrictions within a zoning district, and with this one, we're, it's more of the the amount of density you could fit within a particular parcel limits.
Okay, but we still cannot go by that because we, when you use that, it might make reference to the fact that that is what it may be zoned in the future, and we do not know in fact if that is the case.
That is correct.
Okay.
And actually, see, Brian, if you would like to say a few words, or we can just keep answering questions.
Madison, thanks for the overview and the interest of time. I'm not gonna go back through the entire presentation. I believe this is the, at least the second time that the mayor and Board of Commissioners have gone through this information. But I am here to address any questions or concerns, and also to say thank you to the residents of Washington Street and North Providence and the Board of Commissioners. We paused for about sixty days to address any and all concerns. Over the last two months, I believe, the collaboration with ourselves and the residents, we're in a much better place today than we were sixty days ago. But no formal presentation. You've gone through all the details, but certainly available for any, for any questions or concerns that I can address.
Any comments, questions to Brian or anybody else? Commissioner Simpson?
I don't necessarily have any questions, but there was just a few things that I just wanted to kind of state. I know that we did receive quite a few public comments for tonight, and Melody has forwarded that to the board, so if there's anybody watching or listening at home that we did get an opportunity to see those and read those. I just want to be clear and state really for the record that what the matter is before us is not to consider what may or may not be built. This is strictly a zoning issue, so we are only allowed as a board to consider the uses permitted by that particular zoning district. So anybody who's watching it, we cannot consider what the developer and builder will or will not put on this parcel of property. That being said, whatever goes forward with whatever their plans are, there are steps that they would initially have to work with the town staff to whatever their project was. Then it would go to the planning board, which would have an opportunity for the public to speak at as well as would come back before us as the Board of Commissioners, again, to provide the public involvement and to give input to us at that particular time of their feedback. So just because there's a zoning request doesn't mean that there's a particular thing that is or isn't planned, and we cannot, as a board, consider that in our voting. So that's all I just kind of wanted to state and just reassure the citizens what we're doing tonight.
Very good. Any additional comments, thoughts for the applicant or anybody on the staff? Okay, looking around here, I see none this evening, so we're requesting, they're requesting an action by us, a motion to approve or deny along with its appropriate reasonable and consistency statement. So I guess the question is, do we have a motion? Commissioner Simpson?
I'd like, Anne Simpson, I would like to make a motion to approve petition R Z zero-one-zero-two-eight-five-dash-two-zero-two-zero as well as the motion to, that the, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future planning goals of the town of Waxar. It is reasonable and in the public's interest to allow for urban scale density consistent with the G four downtown residential future land use designation as recommended by the two thousand and sixteen comprehensive, comprehensive plan policy bridge.
All right, before us, we have that motion. So motion to approve. So I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tim McMillan?
Brenda McMillan, aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye. Anne Simpson, aye.
Commissioner Westlick?
Tracy Westlick, nay.
Commissioner Moray?
Pedro Moray, nay.
Okay, we're gonna go a little bit, Charlie, just to ask for your guidance along these next steps. If you could help us understand the next steps from a formality?
Well, from a formality standpoint, Mayor, it's a tie vote. You have the right to vote.
Very good. All right, well, I will, I will cast my vote in favor of the motion to approve, and so I guess that ends the discussion.
State your name.
I guess I have to state my name. I'm Mayor Ron Pappas. I think we need to fix that. Melody, we have to fix that procedure. All right, well, I appreciate that. So the motion has passed three-two, and we'll move on to new business. No new business on this. Melody, I think you're back up with the general public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. So we had received two. One was from Paul Schneider at four oh three College Street. For three years, I have been sending pictures to the city and specifically to the town manager of the flooding on my property because of the building around my home. Chris and Orion are aware and have been out to see my, to see firsthand what I and my neighbors have to deal with. I keep being told there is no budget to address the water flow runoff. If there is no budget to address a problem, why compile that problem ignorance? The city and commission is now aware reparations need to be made to existing properties before there is further construction. Not even going to address the traffic folly that's been created. You are notified. And that's the end of the first comment. The second comment was submitted by Jonathan Weisberg at twenty-six twenty-two Cricket Co. Waxall. Comment was related to crosswalks. We absolutely need a crosswalk from the corner adjacent to Mary O'Neill's crossing over toward the ice cream shop side across Providence. This is an accident waiting to happen. I see one near the tracks, but it's not clearly marked for vehicles, and there isn't a sidewalk on the opposite side. This is an accident waiting to happen, I see one near the tracks, but it's not clearly marked for vehicles and there isn't a sidewalk on the opposite side. Please address this as soon as possible and that's the end.
Very good, thank you, Melody, and I'm sure the town manager takes some notes on that. And I know that there's been some comments before, so we'll we'll look at that later on as we follow up. We're going to move down to the town leadership reports and we're going to go first up is town manager Jeffrey Wells. Jeffrey, the microphone is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, just one comment this evening and it's a repeat from our last meeting, but just want to make sure that the public is aware that Union County. Is requesting public comments on their 2050. Comp plan, they're in the middle of their comment window. On their draft and they also have other meetings, some of which are scheduled virtually and then others which are in person. And one of those in person meetings will be here in Waxaw. On December 15th and that'll be in the Police Department Community Room. From five to seven PM. County staff will be available to showcase their plan and answer any questions. They are seeking that input in advance of their anticipated completion in early 2021. They have a virtual meeting also scheduled for December 2nd from seven to eight 30 PM. And two other in person meetings, one on December 8th at the Union County Ag Center from five PM to seven PM. And another one on the 14th from 11 AM to 1 PM at Indian Trail Town Hall. But again, the one or that's closest to here will be in Waxaw. On December 15th at our Police Department Community Room. And considering how everybody's familiar with how the map of our town limits looks, there's a lot of of. Of areas that are county jurisdiction that people probably are not aware of. So I would certainly encourage people to come out and take a look because there's a lot of. Properties on Highway 16, for example, that are not in the town limits, but they are county property. And then there's other examples of that in other places as well, so. Certainly be part of the process if you can, and that would be your opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Jeff, appreciate that, a lot of follow up to do on those items and certainly everybody who can. Do participate on that input to the county, they could use everything that we have to give them back. So with this next one, if there's no other further comments from the town manager, I'm going to pass the baton back over to Ms. Dina. Dina, you can tell us some more about what you're doing.
Yes, sir. All right, so I'm going to walk you through what's been happening with Park and Rec, what's coming up and how you can be involved. There we go. Alrighty, so our program guide goes through to December. And how you register is on our rec desk. Software, we'd love to have you a part of our upcoming programs and events. Next week, we have a teen program with Eight Legs Gallery. Ms. Jane's teaching some glass classes for our teens. That registration is still open. We also have mixologies happening the following week as well. That class is already full and we've already got requests to have it again in the in the winter months. We are continuing our fitness for Waxaw. Our Tuesdays and Thursdays walking club. Continue on until Christmas. We still have Fridays yoga at Town Creek. Please join us for that. And our senior fitness actually wraps up next week for the holidays and we'll start back in January. So it's time for Christmas and all of its events. And so we have our first drive through. Senior Christmas luncheon party event going on, so. As you know, we've had to reinvent what events look like with COVID. And our seniors unfortunately have had. They weren't able to join us for hardly any programs or events for this whole year. And so they really look forward to this Christmas luncheon. So instead of canceling, we're having a drive through. Signups are till Wednesday afternoon, so if you haven't signed up yet seniors, it is your chance to get. Signed up, you can call Ms. Joan and she would love to help you with that. So we definitely need you to sign up ahead of time. Then we're having a Christmas concert that night with partnership. Forest Hills is letting us use their parking lot for our drive in Christmas concerts. We're having music and dance routines going on, so it's great for the whole family and we need you to sign up as well. And thank you for all the volunteers with the OC and staff for helping with both these events, we really appreciate it. Next, we have our reverse Christmas parade, so again, thinking outside the box. The parade participants will actually drive through, so our citizens are drive through and. A parade activity area is going to be on the side of the road, so they'll we'll wave and say hello. And entertain as they ride past. We need our residents to please sign up with our rec desk. As soon as possible, so we can get you in your program lineup. And be ready to have some fun, we're also giving out little goodie bags as well. So please join us for this awesome event, just reimagine a little bit. Again, we are doing our Santa's rise to the neighborhood. That's very traditional, but Mrs. Claus is joining Santa this year, so it's going to be awesome. So please look out for your neighborhood on our mapping system. That you can find on social media and on the website, so that starts on Sunday, the 13th and goes through to that Friday. So please look at where your your day is. Like I'll be on the fire truck helping navigate on that third, no, excuse me, Friday, Friday's my day. And I hope to see you out waving socially distancing outside at your neighbors. But you get to see Santa and Mrs. Claus this year. So this is save the date, we have our menorah lighting in our downtown. Near the military wall. At Tuesday, this December the 15th at 5 PM. This is a partnership with the Ballantyne Jewish Center. So this is a wonderful way for us to celebrate all different types of holiday. Engagements for the season. And then Reads Across America is on the 19th and it's held at our our Waxall South Side Cemetery. And if you were able to listen earlier when we did our workshop at 4:30. You'll know all about the downtown update to our park plan. We're super excited. One way for you to give us back your input is the public survey. The UR code is on there, but it's also on the website, on our social media. If you need assistance at all, you can come and call the office, we'd love to help you. The next in person public engagement is going to be Thursday, January the 14th at our PD. From 4:30 to 6:30 and then we're going to do another engagement with the BOC and the Park and Rec Committee. On January the 26th, 4:30 for work session. And then we'll be back that night to hopefully get the plan passed so we can start our wonderful new park. Again, we're looking for partnerships for our upcoming events and programs. So this is a call to all instructors that would love to do a class with us, partner with us. With upcoming programs from January to March, we're doing three months at a time because it's. A little bit easier because of COVID on that end, so we'd love to partner with you with upcoming programs. This afternoon, the governor made an addition to the order for. The tightening up the mask requirements, doesn't really change anything that we're already not doing in the our park system. So we have all the appropriate signage and hand sanitizing and cleaning protocol already in place. So it's just healthy reminder to, you know, wash your hands. And remember to keep your distance without non family members. As always, I leave you with our mission and vision from Park and Rec. And I would answer any questions that you have on me right now.
Any questions for Dina? Across the board, seeing none, Dina, thank you for always keeping us celebrating something.
Yes, sir.
You're definitely the cheerleader for the town, it's been a lot of fun, I'm sure a lot of people are looking forward. To all of your efforts over there, even though we have a very distinctly different look this year. The events still happen, so thanks for keeping us all busy and looking forward to something really fun.
Awesome.
We got a comment from the town clerk, I see.
Hey, so I heard from Chief Ice, he wasn't able to get on the meeting earlier, but wanted to express a sincere gratitude to everyone.
And again, thanks to the chief, I'm sure you can look at this later if he's listening now to. I just want to say thank you again to his team and how much we all appreciate and the town appreciates their efforts and everything they do for us. So well deserved award, a lot of hard work went into that. So thank you, Melody, for forwarding that to us. Dina, I'm going to drop back down to you a little bit, any other questions and comments anybody has for Dina? Dina, thank you very much.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Looking forward to the park starting somehow, I can't wait to to watch somebody turning that first spade of dirt out there.
Me too.
That's great, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'm going to move down to any comments that we might have from the Board of Commissioners, anybody feel like they want to speak tonight? Quiet group. All right, well, I will just close by, oh, there goes, there's a hand that came up front, Mayor Porton, go ahead.
Just a quick happy, healthy, safe Thanksgiving to all. Enjoy time with your family and just be blessed and safe.
Thank you for that and certainly we all echo that. Traveling is going to be very different this year for those who may take the chance or go ahead and do it or have to. Certainly, we want to again wish and extend our sincere thanks to everybody here in town and wish them, you know, a happy Thanksgiving as well. That if they have a large enough family that they can gather up, they'll enjoy themselves. Otherwise, I think probably the Zooms and those types of venues are going to be very busy on Thursday. So again, we wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, any other comments from anybody?
Mr. Mayor, real quick, just want to thank the Board for their vote on the agenda tonight about. My contract for next year, I'm privileged to serve in this position and I thank you very much and happy Thanksgiving to all.
Thank you, Charlie, well deserved, thank you for all your help and support during these last, what now 11 months plus. We've all relied on you in so many ways and we will continue to do that, so stay healthy yourself. And we want to make sure that we can move forward with all the things that we have to during the next year. So Charlie, welcome back to the team and thank you very much.
Thank you very much and thank you, Bill. Be safe.
Thank you, all right, so seeing that there are no other comments, no other hands floating in the backgrounds back there, I'm going to say that we have. No, no items on the closed session, so I will ask for a specific motion to adjourn. And we'll see if we can learn our way through this town clerk one at a time, so if somebody will make the motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn.
Tracy Westlock, aye.
Mayor Porton McMillan?
Brenda McMillan, aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Ann Simpson, aye.
Commissioner Morey?
Pedro Morey, aye.
Very good, we are adjourned, good night, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Come see you on the streets, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.